I was informed by the mayor the other day when I told her I was late getting the last meeting. She said, "It's okay for you to start late, but don't you dare start early." That's against the law.
I can see that.
So, I'm waiting.
We've got more stuff.
Y'all know what the biggest lie ever told was, don't you? That's when a preacher lays his watch up on the pulpit. And then he's preaching and all of a sudden he says, "In closing." That's the biggest lie ever told right there. You gonna be here all week? Yeah. My engagement here is through the month. It is officially ten o'clock. Is the staff ready? All right, I'm going to open the meeting at ten o'clock. And call the meeting to order. We have a quorum, so there's no need for roll call. So, first order of business will be item three, our consent agenda. Our minutes from our last meeting and also we have a final plat for the Chick-fil-A on there. Any discussion? Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda to discuss it? Okay, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion? Have a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, well, moving on to item four A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. This is item four A, receive report, hold a discussion, and take action on a site plan for a Chick-fil-A located at the northwest intersection of FM 120 and Lane Drive. It's case number 2021-110SP. This is the subject property here outlined in yellow. As mentioned in the caption, it's at the intersection of Lane and FM 120. Here's the zoning of the subject property. It's currently a zone local retail. If you think back to our P and Z meeting last month, this body recommended approval for a conditionally used permit for a restaurant with drive-through, which would be the Chick-fil-A. And the city council approved that conditional use permit. So now, this is the site plan approval and the final plat was just approved on the consent agenda. So, this is a little bit difficult to read on screen. I tried to finagle it as best I could. But you have a clear version in your packet as well. The proposed site plan will have a main entry on FM 120. It's currently, you can see that green space that's there. All of what that final plat did is combined a lot of that property into one contiguous parcel. The main entry will be off of 120 and then it'll loop around north, come back south, and you'll have a pretty large drive-through allowing for the stacking of forty-three vehicles. In the event that the stacking were to ever come out of that drive-through lane that you see, the site's been designed to have an interior space as well to hold additional cars. So, we shouldn't see an issue creating traffic backing up on a 120 that we've seen with other sites, other Chick-fil-A locations. It was a well-thought-out site plan from Chick-fil-A. Here's an elevation of the proposed project here. It's your standard Chick-fil-A. It's gonna have a brick veneer with a metal trim along the top and some of the windows and door frames, of course. So, city staff recommends approval of the new Chick-fil-A. The final plat was just approved. I'm present for any questions that you may have. And the applicant is not here, though, but I can answer what comes through hopefully.
Any questions?
Just one. Has anybody, obviously Morton's no longer gonna be a continuing road at that point. But that intersection, has there been any decision what's gonna happen there? Is it just gonna become a four-way light?
I'm not aware of any plans right now or any significant changes. John, do you know? Are you talking, Ms. Cameron, about North Lilis and where Morton meets and Walker?
Yeah.
We have, part of the work with adjacent property owners is also a quick claim deed for the remaining portion of Morton. Our hope is that they will look at expansion plans for the convenience stores. You know, there's an end-cap drugstore in that facility. We're hoping that overall that that intersection can be redesigned. They can expand. We'll turn that into more of a cleaner four-way stop versus what it is today. I know it's confusing. So, that was part of our effort with joining property owners to also release that remaining portion of Morton so we can clean up that intersection in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I will add the applicant is here now, Mr. Brian Berger.
Would the applicant like to come in? If you would, name an address for the record.
Name's Brian Berger with Burger Engineering, seventeen one oh three Preston Road, Dallas, Texas. Really just here to answer any questions or address any concerns you might have. Apologize for being late. They were striping seventy-five on the way up.
We understand that. We're surprised you got here.
Got nice white paint all over my car, I'm sure.
It's always a surprise, isn't it, what you're gonna find?
Thank God, the Battle of the Axe is gonna be televised. We don't have to fight that this weekend. Any questions, Speaker?
Yeah, just glad you're here.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the proposed final plat.
There's another plat site plan. Okay, have a motion?
A second.
Have a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you, sir. All right, item five A.
This is item five A, receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on the replat of the Darmack Edition located on the northeast corner of North Barrett Avenue and West Elm Street. Case number 2021-070RP. This is the subject property here outlined in yellow. As mentioned, on the northeast corner of Barrett and Elm. This is a pretty straightforward replat. The applicant's wishing to reconfigure the properties, which currently front on the West Elm, onto east Barrett Avenue. One item to note is the plat will actually dedicate a ten-foot right-of-way easement, I'm sorry, not right-of-way easement, a utility easement to the rear of the properties. And this configuration that you see on your screen, this will be to the east. And the property owners also, or the applicant owned the property adjacent to this lot, so they'll also dedicate an additional five-foot utility easement through a separate instrument. Property is owned, single-family, five. And here's the new configuration, as you can see, fronting on Barrett. Present for any questions that you may have, and city staff recommends approval. Oh, and I'll remind you, this is a public hearing.
Any questions, the staff? Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All righty, item five B.
Item five B, receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of the north side addition located on the east side of US sixty-nine, north of East Washington Street. Case number 2021-105RP. So, this is the entire tract here outlined in yellow. And it's a little difficult to see on screen here, but those dash lines that run north to south, those indicate to us that there are existing probably roughly fifty-by-one-hundred lots that run, that front north to south. The applicant's wanting to plat those lot lines away and just simply create Lot 1R and 2R. As you can see in the aerial, there's a commercial-type building with a driveway. The property owner is wishing to sell that commercial property off to somebody who will renovate that and turn that into another future business. They have plans working in the background on that. In the future, for Lot 2R, the property that's adjacent to, I think that's Lamar and Washington Street. Future developer will come in, rezone that, and replat those lots into multiple single-family lots to front on Lamar and Washington. So, this is kind of the first step for that larger overall project. Here's the zoning of the property, zone commercial. I'm present for any questions you may have, and I believe the applicant is also here.
Okay, any questions, the staff? Anyone here to speak in favor of this request?
David Couch, nine-one-nine, West Murray, Denison, Texas. This property belongs to Cody Meyers. And I'm sure we're all familiar with the building. It's been out there vacant for the last twenty-five years. Cody actually has done some renovations to the interior and that, I mean, it's just a lot of land for that building. And he's wanted to split off some of the future lots in Lot Two. So, this is just the first step in trying to accomplish that.
Okay, any questions, the speaker? Anyone else here to speak in favor of the request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item five C.
This is item five C, receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, make a recommendation on a request to change the zoning of one lot from commercial zoning district to SF five located at eight thirteen West Coffin Street. Case number 2021-108Z. This is the subject property outlined in blue, north of West Coffin Street. This is the east of South Skelland and west of South Armstrong. As you can see, the property, the, sorry, the neighborhoods around the subject property to the north, to the east, and even to the south are predominantly developed in a residential manner. If you go to our zoning table here, our zoning map, you do have some commercial zoning across the street and some light industrial kind of further down the block. I think that's the recycling plant or collection center. However, it's predominantly a residential neighborhood. While our, we do want to encourage some more retail-type uses on Coffin Street, the property itself, due to its size, doesn't really lend itself to any kind of commercial or retail-type use. It wouldn't have enough room for parking, be difficult to meet their setbacks and building standards. So, this lot itself freely only lends itself to residential-type uses, a single-family home here. So, it is any infill. Staff recommends approval of the rezone. I'm present for any questions that you might have. The applicant also provided a narrative in here as well, which I've included.
Any questions, staff? Thank you, Bill. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Is the applicant here today? You're the applicant, sir?
Yeah.
Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval, changing the zoning of the subject property from the commercial zoning district to the single-family five zoning district.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item, I believe we're going to five D now.
Thank you, sir. Five D, receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to zone approximately three-point-seven-four-eight acres along West Crawford Street from SF seven-five to a planned development zoning district. Case number 2021-117PD. This is the subject property here. You have South French running north to south and then West Crawford running east to west. The property, as I mentioned, is owned, single-family, five. This PD creates a base zoning of a single-family five zoning district. However, the PD itself creates a requirement for a mix of lot sizes. If you were to look in your, the attachments, you'll see that range is somewhere between fifty-four hundred to about ten thousand square feet a lot size. Furthermore, the minimum floor area for the new houses would be around fourteen hundred square feet. The applicant has also elected to require two-car garages on all of these property, on all of these new homes. So, even though you do have a base zoning of single-family five, that base zoning really is only there to accommodate some of these more five thousand, six thousand, lower seven thousand square foot type lots. Here's the proposed layout here. It's a little difficult to read. I understand that. On case num, I mean, on lot number twelve and thirteen, city staff has discouraged the creation of these double-fronted lots here, as you can see. For example, if you were to live on Lot seven, eight, or nine, coming out your front yard, you'll be seeing a fence. You'll be looking into someone's backyard. So, what the applicant's done there is they've created standards for Lot twelve that require a fifty percent open tubular fence, kind of similar to like a wrought iron with some landscaping requirements that would be maintained by the HOA. We've requested that to also be in place for Lot thirteen, but the applicant believes that builders just kind of aren't, they really don't want to move forward with developing that lot if that requirement's in place. So, that's also outlined in the ordinance. One of the other items that I'd like you to pay special attention to and possibly provide some feedback and direction as we move forward is if you were to examine some of the language in the plan development here. The well-written does mention that, let's see, if we go to our standards here, you'll see lot depth, you'll see a minimum lot depth of a hundred square feet. I mean, sorry, a hundred feet deep. However, it doesn't give us a specific.
What page are you on?
This is page two of the plan development. You'll see, it's except for cul-de-sacs. And we really want to try and narrow down what that depth would be on these cul-de-sacs. We don't anticipate them being particularly short, I guess is the right word there. However, we do want to have some sort of standard identified before this goes to city council. So, I'm present for any questions that you may have. We recommend approval, and the applicant, Mr. Howerton, is also here.
Go back to the concept plan, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Okay, in some previous discussions, we had talked about, and I don't know if we've, if we've, if we've examined that because we were looking at Lot, I guess that would be Lot ten. That dimension down that side, which would be the rear property line of Lot eleven. We talked about shifting to the left. So, lots one, two, three, and four would be a little less in-depth because I thought it was pretty deep based on the concept plan that I looked at previously.
Okay.
I think, I guess, and I can ask this to the applicant, is that this being a PD, will this concept plan be part of that PD? And the way it's designed and the dimensions and everything that's a part of it?
Yes, sir. So, the, this preliminary plat will be part of the PD as a concept and it kind of serve as a guide. But this body will act on the preliminary plat when it comes through again to make sure that the plat complies with the PD.
Okay, and I'll address that with David when he comes forward, so, Will. Any other questions, Bill?
Just confirming my understanding of everything we heard and said, that twelve will face on the northern cul-de-sac, is that right? Lot twelve will have its front. And there's two cul-de-sacs. And twelve will be opening up to the top cul-de-sac. And sixteen will open to the bottom one.
I'll allow the applicant to address that.
Do you want to put, is there anything else you can tell us, Bill?
Sorry, sir?
I was just gonna say, if you got anything else that you, anything you need to add right at this point?
No, sir, thank you.
The applicant is here, though, if you have any questions about the project itself.
We may want to bring you back here in a few minutes, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Applicant.
David Howerton, sixteen forty West Woodard. I appreciate your time and I'll try to explain what I have here as best I can. I don't know exactly what version that is. This plat has been tweaked several times. And there have been some good comments about the depth of Lot ten, Charlie. And it's presently at eighty feet. And that's what I have submitted in its, in its current state. Really, it's in its final state because I had hoped for the plat being here with the PD at the same time, but it's not. But I'm ready. The lot sizes, I appreciate the base zoning of, of single-family five. The houses on the east and the south, there's eight houses. And the average home size is the fourteen hundred square feet. And so, it really fits this neighborhood to have this particular layout. It's just, even though it's seven-point-five as an overlay, the five is really a good fit for this particular block. I have some photos and I'd like to hand out and explain some of it. I think it could explain. I've got a, the plat is in here again, it's small print, but Lot twelve, I appreciate the comments by staff. And there will be some screening that they suggested and requested for the north side of Lot twelve. Rodney Allison is a friend of mine and he's going to be engaged to help me with that landscaping. But what the commitment is at present is a five-foot-high wrought iron fence with plantings in front of it. Lot twelve, or thirteen, sorry, I've talked to several builders and they like the flexibility of that lot. It will face south, same as Lot twelve. But the way the garage could be on the side and possibilities for how that layout could curl, the side being Iron Horse Lane. Want to move forward with not screening Lot thirteen. I have a picture of the zoning there if we need to talk about that. The next several pictures, you can see the front and the back of several houses in Park Village subdivision and the Cold Creek subdivision, which fit the same kind of design as, or the same circumstances what I have here in Katy Crossing. And I really feel like that relates to orientation. And the wording, and I understand the staff's position and what the ordinance says, but the double-frontage lots, it should be avoided. It doesn't say they have to be, except where essential to overcome specific disadvantages of topography and orientation. And what I would submit to you is that some of the lots that are being tracts that are going to be developed over time, including this one. I've had this property for twenty years and I've thought a lot about how to lay it out. And this is for the market and what's happened the last few years, the fourteen hundred square foot homes seems to be the right, the right fit. And also, in order to do that and not have, I do have the larger lots on the cul-de-sacs and that's just the way the orientation works out. It's, it's more square than it is linear. And so, that's the way, that's the reason I've come up with the layout I have. And so, although it's a, it's not meant to be in opposition to staff's recommendation, it's a, I feel like it's a nuance. It's a, it's a desire. I agree with the recommendation on Lot twelve, but my request is to, to not have any particular screening limitation on Lot thirteen.
Okay, any questions, the speaker?
Can you talk a little bit more about the, maybe it's not the words that I understand, maybe you said it, but the, in that part that's on Crawford, what that's gonna look like?
Yes, thank you. The only part that I own is the triangle that face, that faces north. There's two lots there. Call it the northern triangle. The southern triangle has two owners. One is the original nineteen-twenty-nine platted right-of-way from the city of Denison, MKT revised edition. So, a portion of what everybody has seen along Crawford forever has been owned by the city. There's also a smaller triangle in the very southwest corner that's owned by W.J. Smith. And it's in bankruptcy and that's not, that's gonna be under nobody's ownership forever. So, what I intend to do is the same as the house to the east has done forever, is maintain that whole area. What I hope to do, and I have it pending this approval of the plan development, the engineer's gonna try to design a circular island. And if we can get the fire trucks and the garbage trucks in to come off of Crawford and enter Iron Horse Lane. And that's why I don't have that drawn up right now because I, I haven't engaged the engineer yet. But that area will be maintained and I will have a sign that indicates Katy Crossing subdivision and I'll have landscaping out there to be maintained by the HOA.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion among commission.
I can tell you that, that one picture, this page six, is my neighbor across the street. And it's so well-done that I did not know that was the back of the house. Just a comment on that. It's, I think it can be done very well.
Okay. I really, I mean, I, I know that it's probably not the greatest layout in the world, the way Lot twelve and thirteen lay into this, to this plan. And I totally understand where the city's concerns are from a view perspective. I think that there's been some talks about how to decrease the impact of that. But I think that my main concern has been, and all along, and I've talked to David about this and I've talked to staff about this, is to make sure that the capability of building on these lots is relatively easy. What I don't want to see is create is a, is a plan to where Board of Adjustments is gonna be inundated with a variance process on some houses because it's gonna be impossible to make, make a house fit within the confines of the setbacks. So, that would So that would be, the only thing I'm concerned about is just making sure that, you know, the way I see it is lot 12 right now, with how the radius cuts in on the, on the backside there on, on Gandy, and then it cuts in on the corner up here on, on Stargazer. I, you know, situating a house in there, making it where it fits, and fits within the confines of our setbacks and stuff. And, you know, I just see a few things that, to me, from a design perspective, raised a few red flags, but I think if, if David has already taken that in consideration, and maybe when the final plat comes through, there is some adjustment that would increase the, the size of those lots. You know, I, I was involved in a case in Sherman for a client that, that bought a lot, and then all of a sudden, when we found out what the setback requirements are, then they can't make anything fit the lot, so they go in and ask for a variance, and they would deny the variance. So now they're sitting there with a lot they can't build on. And we don't want to create any kind of hardship knowingly. So that was my only, my only concern. I think it's going to be a, a well-done subdivision. I think David's put a lot of thought into that. I think the, the price point on these homes, with what I anticipate the cost of the lots to be, when it's all said and done after the development costs and everything included, I, I really think that a 1,400 square foot house might be hard to do on a lot that expensive. So I'm, I'm anticipating there are probably going to be larger homes, more expensive homes put on these, on these particular lots. That's just a, that's just my opinion there, for what it's worth. Other than that, I, I mean, I don't, I mean, lot 13, this is not the first subdivision that I've seen where we've got a lot that's on an end cap like that, that, you know, somebody has to look at the back of it, and that's, that's not uncommon in, in lot subdivisions, but it's not the greatest design in the world, but it, it does happen, and it happens more often, I think, than, than we think. So that being said, I think I'm, I'm okay with everything except for making sure that, that we've got adequate space on these lots, that we can get a, you know, a home in there and not have to come back for variances on setbacks.
Do we need to address the minimum lot depth in the cul-de-sac part, as far as, at least, I guess, is there?
You know, that's a matter of geometry. And that's, that, I think that was one of the reasons that I made the suggestion that we might look at moving Iron Horse Lane maybe to the west just a little bit to push everything over so that lot 10, 11, and 17 might gain a little bit more, more space in there. And I don't know if, I mean, David spent a lot of time working on the layout, so that was one of the things I was looking at. Would that be a possibility to do that? And that would increase the depth of 10, 11, or the width of 11, actually, the depth of 10, and the width of maybe 17. Is that something that could be looked at, you think, when you guys do the final plat, David?
Recently moved it back 15 feet, so that lot 10 south line would be 80 feet. But my reluctance to go any further is just getting closer to the railroad track. I mean, it only comes through twice a day, sometimes at four in the morning. I, I lived just north of there and have for 20 years. It's not a big deal. But also, the slope, the sewerability of, of lots two through five, I'm concerned about that. I'd rather not go any further because of the slope. Don't want to have to build pads up out of the, out of the ground too high in order for the sewer to work. The manhole's on the south side of lot 14, so all those things have been considered.
I think that's a valid point about the railroad. I don't know if, Bill or John, can you address whether or not that's going to continue? Is that a line that is a commuter to Sherman, or is that going to be continuing for a long period of time?
Yeah, it's a local, it basically, uh...
It's a commuter one?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's going to continue.
I think, here's, here's what we got to look at. Let's just take lot 10, for example. Now, the dimension on the lot from, which would be the rear property line of 11 is 80 feet, correct? So one would think if you've got a 20-foot setback on the front, you've got a 10-foot setback on the rear, then you can build a 50-foot house, okay? That you'd have 50 foot of depth for your, for your pad. But what we're not, we're not taking into consideration is the radius of that cul-de-sac cuts back up into that lot. So when you come 20 foot off of that property line, as it cuts into the lot, and then you take 10 off, you don't have 50 foot anymore. Does that make sense? So that's why I want to make sure is, you know, if you wind up with, you know, you've got a 40-foot dimension there for, for a house in there, you know, it's going to make it, it's going to make it difficult. Maybe, that shouldn't be my concern. Maybe that should be the concern of the developer and the builder that buys the lot and put the house on there. But, I mean, that's just, that's just my observation, you know? And maybe lot 10 is the only one that's really of concern in this, in this particular case, because I think lot nine's fine. I think 11, I don't know what the dimension of 11 is on that, on that west, or, yeah, the west property line there. But, you know, it, it's kind of deceiving, because you would think if you took 50 or 80 and subtracted 30 from it, okay, we got 50 foot. Well, 50 foot's, that's pretty good. You don't have 50 foot. You don't have less than that from that building line to back to where the, the rear building line is. So, anyway, that's my two cents, so. Other than that, I like the, I like the development. I like where it's at. I like the fact that it's going to be a nice addition to Crawford Street. I'm hoping that this development going in will spur the, the development of the, of the, of the track across the road, you know, that's already been platted and everything. So this could be a catalyst to get things moving over there on that side of town. Anybody else think? If not, I'll adjourn motion.
I move to recommend approval of rezoning the subject property to the planned development zoning district pending final review and acceptance of additional landscaping and screening standards for double-fronted lots.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion with a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
opposed? None? Motion carries. All right. Staff updates.
Mr. Chairman, Diane had to step out. I gave you on your dais the, a new type of format for a month report, and it really reflects all the work that you do. As you get in the report, it'll talk about the plats and site plan applications that are, that have been approved by the commission during the month of July, status of construction. But, you know, just as an indication of, of the work you've done, we have approximately 168,000 square feet of non-residential development that's gone through the approval process. We highlight the projects that are actually under construction, the non-residential projects. But again, this will be updated every month. It'll reflect the previous month's report. It's on our website, and I'll probably start just sending the links to you once we've done it, so you can have that instead of printing out paper copies. But I think it really reflects kind of the, the spirit of, of development that we're in in this city.
You know, I will make one comment. You gave me a copy of this last week. Just looking at that graph where we are ahead of past two years on building permits issued, and our growth is, and this is a hats off to our staff, because when you think about it, in plan review and inspections, we have three men upstairs that are doing plan reviews, and they're doing all of the building inspections. And everything is being done in a relatively timely manner. No complaints that I've heard from any developers, builders of, of the length of time it's taken to get stuff done. And they're doing a lot up there. And, and so you guys, too, are moving things, and it's, and everything seems to be flowing, flowing pretty well. So hats off to you guys. Appreciate that. I did note, one thing that we did talk about, I don't know if the commission's aware of it, can we bring it up? The action taken on the, on the overlay on, on the highway out there?
As you know, at the recent meeting, we had the issue of updating the zoning ordinance, quite a few amendments to the ordinance. Your, your recommendation went to council. I prepped the ordinance reflecting your recommendation to leave in automotive boat-related uses in the highway overlay district. Quite a bit of discussion from council. There was some, again, some opposition to allowing retail uses in the lot industrial district. Generally, the council, I think, was in favor of majority recommendations. They tabled, though, the request to the latter meeting in September. I think there's still some discussion about whether or not they want to allow the automotive uses by right in the highway overlay district. So at this time, I'm looking at various options of maybe having it by at least a CUP, not putting it as a prohibited use, but allowing those uses to come in by CUP. But again, we'll, we'll take that final recommendation of the council to their last meeting in, in September.
Okay. Will you all be aware of that? Anything else before we?
I had a thought about that. I was there at council meeting, and I, and I remember what Brett shared when we had discussion of how we want Dennison to look and not have dealerships from one end of the corridor to the other on 75. And I was just curious to know if there would be a compromise where we could designate a certain area where the, where it would be agreeable, say, just as an idea, from where Classic is going north, something of that nature, just a possibility.
I think that's a little bit behind my reasoning of going by a conditional use permit, because by that you can basically determine, is that appropriate area or not? Is it, you know, you want to, you know, basically say going further north is appropriateness, where we're going to protect the south gateway into the city, where the hospital gateway...
There could be another zone on the south side.
So by giving a CUP, it gives you the opportunity to make a recommendation to council whether or not that site, you know, is an appropriate site for a dealership, or is it something that could be protected for a diff, a different use going forward?
Thank you.
Well, I definitely think the CUP is the way to go, to that, you know?
It doesn't say you can't.
It doesn't say you can't, that's right. And I, I, that's the thing I don't want to do, is I don't want to say you can't, because obviously we've already set by precedent out there. So I'm a little bit disagreement on my part with some of council, but I will be there on that meeting to address, you know, P and Z's stance on, on this and why we, why we chose to go the route we did. So I'll be there for that in September. All right, nothing else? You ever take a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. All right, have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at 10:41 a.m.